We good to go, Amy?
Just a second. I'll let you know as soon as it goes.
Okay, all right. I keep getting a note on the top here says live on Facebook, so.
Yep, we're ready to go.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, we'll come back to order here and we'll move into the questioning of the applicant and those opposing the opposing the application by the commission. Before we start that, I'd like to call on Mr. Urban to maybe address some of the questions that were asked during the testimony opposing the application. So, Mr. Urban?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things quickly. Procedurally, I want to make sure that anybody that spoke in opposition understands that there's another opportunity for rebuttal and then there are closing statements. So, as Mr. Chairman said before we took a break, you do have another opportunity. This is the portion, as you said, Mr. Jeffries, the questioning of the those that spoke in opposition. I want the applicant to be prepared on a couple of things. I wrote down a number of these issues. The details of the traffic analysis, I'm going to talk briefly about how we achieve that traffic analysis and what we did, but the details are important, along with, I heard questions about the trees getting older and maybe emergency vehicles. The offset on Reimers Road and Old Floydsburg Road is, I think, an applicant's subject to discuss. We can certainly ask the county engineer and the city engineer what their opinion might be after the applicant discusses it. The scale and tone of the project are, again, the applicant in their rebuttal. Entrance only and exit onto old on entrance only on old on the Friendship Drive and exit on Old Floydsburg Road is an applicant's subject to discuss. Noise during construction and then once construction is complete regarding dumpsters and emergency vehicles is the applicant. Old Floydsburg Road. Again, right and left turns, that's the applicants to decide to discuss. And then I heard issues that might exist on Dogwood Avenue. What I want to talk about quickly first is this connection to Dogwood Avenue is fictitious. I know a number of people have called Amy, the case manager, trying to discuss that. I don't know who put that out, but there is no connection to Dogwood directly from this project. Somebody would have to buy a property and tear down a house in order to make that connection. So, that was the first thing. Mr. Allison, I get your great analysis of the traffic study and understand that it appears to be a paper study. During this time of COVID, obviously, we're in a unique situation being able to try to even do traffic analysis. So, we had discussion with, we're part of Kipta, which is the local planning and transportation agency. And we utilize what was called streetlight data that they provided to us plus historic traffic counts. And the reason we did that is because if we try to take existing traffic counts, school's not in session and commuting patterns are different. So, again, I wanted, and then the the Planning Commission adopted that as a policy last month, just how do we do a traffic analysis during this time of COVID? The particulars of raised by your things like the turning movements and you mentioned six vehicles versus 12, that will be an applicant's traffic expert to discuss. So, and again, we'll talk about that exit back onto Old Floydsburg and Reimers as the applicant. And Jim Solomon might have comments or Chris Crumpton might have comments later. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, unless there's something else, you can proceed with questions from the commission.
Okay, let me, I know Minister Loggson had a question about aligning the road there, you know, making sure those get, I mean, see what the possibility of that could, could you or maybe Mr. Solomon?
Well, again, I think I, we talked about this, Mr. Solomon and I, it's best that the applicant addresses that first and then the county engineer engineer can comment regarding their reasons why it's not aligned.
Okay, before we move into question from the from the Commissioners, let me ask Mr. Baker if he would like to address some of these questions that has been brought up.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you're in the questions from the commission to those speaking in opposition and then there's an opportunity for that rebuttal.
Those speaking.
Okay, all right, so you want us, so you're suggesting we just leave any questions from the Commissioners?
You got 30 minutes for the Commissioners to ask questions of those speaking in opposition.
Okay, all right, Commissioners, do you have questions here for folks? We're speaking either in opposition or the applicant, either one.
Correct. That 30 minutes does include questions of the commission to the applicant.
Correct, correct. Okay, Commissioners, you're you're up here, so who would like to go first?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, Miss Hagan.
So, this is for the applicant. On the apartment building on the four-story side, did I understand you to say that the four-story side has a ravine? And does that mean that four-story side, the first floor is below grade or at grade? Is it going to be a pop-up three-four building or will it appear to be a three-story all the way around?
Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Chairman Jeffries. What I understand it to be, and Mr. Kimball can come on and confirm, from the majority of the facades of the building, it's three stories, the ravine areas where there's a small walkout for that, what I guess constitutes the fourth level is the walkout. Mr. Kimball calls it a lighted basement area, but Craig, would you hop on and and answer Commissioner Hagan's question, please?
Sure, sure. Thanks, John. Yes, the building never steps up in terms of a fourth floor. It really just kind of gets exposed around the back on the ravine as a fourth floor. Those those apartments are at grade, they are not below grade. But it is, because the grade is is sloping down, the backside of the building is exposed that one additional floor.
So, so from a viewshed standpoint, you would never see any side of the building as higher than the other side. It would always look like three stories, except for on the four-story side, you would have a lower floor.
That's correct.
Okay.
It would never step up, it would only step down where the grade is falling away.
What what is the height of the building?
And and this depends a little bit on how building height is defined, Wendy, but the the front of the building is three stories is probably in the range of 35, 36 feet to the eve. Where on the backside, it would be closer to to 46, 47 feet to the eve, measured from the grade where it's down a level. I think we're by building definition, I believe we're supposed to use the average grade plane, which would put it probably a little bit closer to 40 feet overall because because it's higher on the top side, lower on the backside. More of it is more of it is three stories than four stories. I think there are only about 10 apartments that are on that exposed lower level around the ravine.
Okay, and then also for the applicant on the multifamily portion, how do you qualify the renter apartments? Is that age restricted or what is the qualification?
I'm sorry. Clarify the question again, if you would.
Oh, I was asking, since they're not market rate apartments for the general public, do you, how do you restrict who rents the apartment portion?
Right, it will be age 62 and older would be the age restriction.
Okay. Okay. Jim, when would, when do we address questions related to construction access or binding element related to construction access?
Urban?
Well, I'm a little confused. I, we haven't gotten a response back yet from the applicant and they were going to talk about construction noise and maybe talk about construction access. But we can discuss that actually when we close the hearing and go towards making a decision. But I think the applicant is is aware of this construction access and noise issue raised and they would discuss it when they have their time to answer these questions I put forth.
Okay, and one more question, because I'm not sure when it's appropriate to ask. For instance, I know one of the comments has been as it relates to traffic and the through traffic possibly going from Old Floydsburg through and Reimers over to 146. And then also just the amount of traffic that could be generated from the density of the development. Is there an option or when would we discuss an option to have a gated area so that like a portion of it was forced to Reimers and a portion of it was forced to 146 as opposed to all of it being through traffic?
You've just kind of posed the question and maybe they can answer that in their rebuttal.
Okay. That's all I have.
They can answer that question now because this is question from the commission to the applicant.
Correct, that is correct, so.
The applicant can respond to the commission questions right now.
Well, and I, again, we have a list of things that the opponents have listed. They should be given an opportunity to address all of those questions.
During rebuttal.
Correct, but I, yeah, but I.
They're coming up now, those questions are coming up now. I think they can, should be given an opportunity to answer them.
Yeah, I agree, but I I think that if Mr. Baker or his folks that work with the applicant want to address Miss Hagan's questions, I think it would be appropriate at this time.
Yes, I agree.
Mr. Baker?
You're on mute, John.
That mute button again. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to invite Mr. Carmen to the microphone, please, and to answer the construction entrance. I can tell you that I know this does respond a little bit to Commissioner Hagan's question, but also a little bit to one of the persons in opposition who raised the the concern of the long construction. The construction in two phases would only be about 30 months. It would not be the duration of six years. And then as it relates to the construction, traffic for the construction, Mr. Carmen, could you provide an answer, please?
Certainly, I briefly mentioned it in the previous presentation and it's also indicated on the development master plan that we would utilize the point of ingress and egress on Old Floydsburg, which is the location of the historic entrance cognizant of traffic on La Grange Road. We wanted to utilize Old Floydsburg for the construction access. That that access is also addressing another point that was raised. That access has been a historic access into the property. It's currently closed, although it's located in the area that is the best site distance. Those that use Old Floydsburg should be aware that it's somewhat rolling. The the location that we have proposed provides the safest location. Should that, as was suggested, should we align our access with the why or where Old Floydsburg and Reimer split? That would really be a dangerous location because it's really a blind spot with traffic coming from primarily from the east traveling to the west. It it's just a really bad site distance area and would be a really dangerous. Certainly, that could be considered, but I I believe that would be an extremely unsafe place to have our point of access or or exit.
Okay, Miss Hagan, did that answer your question?
Partially, so would the applicant be open to a binding element that prohibited access from Friendship Drive to the construction site?
Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and one thing that I've still not gotten used to with this virtual setup is to be able to ask our client, but I, from conversations before, I do not see that as a problem, Commissioner Hagan. But I would like to confirm that, but I don't see a problem with that.
Would would you also be open to timeframes, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday and no construction on Sunday?
And again, I'll, I know my teammates are out there and I would appreciate any weighing in with that.
This is Roger Harper and I work with the applicant as a development consultant. I was sworn in earlier. With respect to construction traffic, we are directing it via Reimers Road or Old Floydsburg entrance. There's, we don't have an objection to a restriction. I would also add that there's an applicant restriction on any Saturday construction and we would not do Sunday construction either. And as I believe John noted earlier, that we anticipate this to be a two-phase construction project, first phase about 20 months and second phase, when it, when it occurs is probably in the 10 to 12 month range.
Okay, back to the original question, which was, and again, I don't know if this is the right time for that. I, is there, would the applicant consider creating a gated area within the community so that the access points were, for instance, the assisted living and senior living portion would use primarily 146 and then the apartment area and cottages might use Reimers as their main ingress and egress?
I think we're accomplishing what you're asking in that the Reimers Road or Old Floydsburg Road, once we're complete with construction or even complete with first phase, that will be a restricted access gate that will be solely for residents and staff. We, we're, we certainly can't keep them from going out friendship, but it'll be much easier access both for residents and for staff to use that that dedicated entrance. And it'll be a gated entrance, it'll be, it'll have signage. If any service traffic shows up there, they'll be redirected to come in on friendship.
Okay, Miss Hagan, is that answer your questions right now?
Yeah, for now.
Okay, all right, any other Commissioners who would like to go next? Any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Hampton?
Haven't any heard anybody talk about, well, let me back up. What is Friendship Drive a private drive?
Yeah, I don't know, Mr. Urban or Mr. Solomon, do you all want to address that?
The applicant, the applicant should address that.
Okay, Mr. Baker?
It is a private drive.
We talked about egress. I haven't heard anybody mention Pollock Avenue. Up there at the northwest, you can cut through there behind the fire station and go up Foley Avenue to 36. So, I, that seems like another way in and out.
Mr. Baker, you want to address that?
Sure, our proposed development plan does not have that as a connection.
But it is a connection.
It is today, but with the future of development of the property, it is not intended to connect. But, you know, we'd be open to that discussion if it's found that it's, you know, helps alleviate stress.
I don't know what that means. Does that mean you're going to close Pollock Avenue for Friendship Drive?
Roger, you want to take that one? Because I was under the understanding that we are not going to maintain a connection there.
No, there's no plans to change the access to Pollock Drive. It'll, it'll remain connected to Friendship Lane.
So, that is another in and out.
It's the current, the current access from Pollock to Friendship will remain unchanged.
So, I'm, you're saying, you're in your statement, you say there's only two way, one way in, one, you got a, you got a La Grange Road and you got a Floydsburg Road. But actually, you can cut through Pollock and go up Foley or down Foley and then throw across Pollock.
I, I concede that.
Roger, can I?
We're not seeing that as, it is a major access point.
I didn't say major, I'm saying it's, it doesn't have to be major for people to use it.
Let me, let me call on Mr. Harper, I think he had a quite, had a, something.
No, I was trying to respond, I was responding to Commissioner Hampton.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I agree, it's an access point.
If you could call on Mr. Edens.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Edens?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hampton. I I would just point out that we don't own Pollock or Foley and so it would be like us putting in our plan to cut through someone else's neighborhood. And so that's why we wouldn't want to officially say that.
Mr. Hampton, any additional questions?
Just, it looks to me like there'd be a lot of, I don't understand why that's not an egress, but whatever.
Okay, all right.
The street's open.
Okay.
Mr. Jeffries, I have a question.
Mr. Falvey, yes, sir.
I have a couple. If we can address the traffic study, I just want some clarifications on it. On page two of it, the very introduction, the last sentence, it says intersection of Kentucky 146 at Friendship Drive, Houston Lane and Old Floydsburg at Reimers Road and the proposed entrance. What's the proposed entrance?
Mr. Baker or Ms. Zimmerman?
Diana, feel free to jump on, but I believe what she's stating there is that section at the proposed entrance would would just be the access point from Friendship on to Old Floydsburg. But I don't want to put words in Diane's mouth, so if if you wouldn't mind chiming in, Diane, would you please?
Sure, good morning, Diane Zimmerman. The proposed entrance reference there in the introduction is the proposed entrance on Reimers Road? Because the Friendship Drive is an existing intersection?
Okay, well, it's just a little confusing, it says at Reimers Road and the proposed entrance. Well, it's confusing to me, maybe not everybody.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on, so there is no proposed entrance other than the one on Reimers, the one you mentioned there.
Correct.
All right, same page, at the bottom of the page, existing conditions. It says the speed limit is 45 miles an hour. Well, it's 35 miles an hour in Pee Wee Valley.
Well, this, the state database says that the 45 mile an hour goes past the entrance to Friendship Drive. It goes to the 0.34 mile marker, which is just to the east of or northeast of Friendship Drive.
Well, maybe this goes back to Mr. Allison when he was saying it was a paper study instead of an actual study, but the posted speed limit, starting way before Friendship Manor going west is 35 miles an hour, not 45, so.
Mr. Falvey, just be be aware, you know, not to testify.
Oh, well, I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
Sure.
It's posted 45, but it is to me, I'll testify and say it's not.
Got you.
I like to keep on going here if it's all right with the traffic study. So, daily, on page five, you're going to generate 1,088, Diane?
That's correct.
Okay, and and that's with, that's with all the new units?
Correct.
Okay. Going on here, I just, the very last or page eight. I've got a question on next to the last paragraph. It says you've taken information from a 2003 study and that was showing 16,100 cars a day? Are we using a 2003 study?
You, to my knowledge, the Oldham County Planning Department has not updated the 2003 study that was completed and the traffic impact study regulations require a statement that refers back to that 2003 study.
Okay, so that's why you had referred to it, but it's, it hadn't been updated in 17 years then.
Correct.
So, how can we trust it is what I'd like to know?
Well, the the point of the paragraph is to go back to that 2003 study when the entire county was evaluated for capacity and where might improvements need to be made. And and my point in referencing it, besides the requirement, is to show you that since 2003, the traffic on 146 has either maintained itself or is slightly lower than was identified in 2003.
It just, it just can't be, but that, I'm testifying again, but I, under conclusions, just the next paragraph down, so it's got a, you think it will operate at a level of Service D or better in 2026?
Correct.
And my question is, how can you double the amount of units planned in the Brighton Development and not increase? How can it go down? It, you're, you're doubling the volume.
Well, I'm, I mean, if you look at Friendship Drive northbound in the PM peak hour, it goes from 28.8, 28.3 seconds to 32.5, so it did not go, it did not get better. It just maintained the the level of service that would be provided at that time.
Well, maybe it's me, it just doesn't seem to make sense. All right, I've got one other question. Mr. Jeffries, is okay?
Go ahead.
On the statement earlier that Wendy was asking, and I have forgotten the applicant's name on the different heights of the three and four-story buildings. He said the height should be 47. Well, if they just look at their PUD development summary, it says the four-story building's going to be 55 feet and the three-story is going to be 50 feet. So, how high are these buildings going to be?
Mr. Baker?
Craig, do you want to come in and clarify that?
Sure, what what I testified earlier, Mr. Falvey, was that was to the eve height. What what we were asked in the PUD definition was to the ridge of the roof. So, so the the numbers that you've just quoted in the PUD definition are to the highest point of the building from grade.
And that's the way it should be, shouldn't it?
There are several different ways to measure building height and it it could be to the eve, it could be midpoint of sloped roof, could be to the ridge. We took in the PUD definition to the ridge to be the worst-case scenario.
Okay, and on your renderings that were done, and by the way, I loved your package, probably the best package I've seen come in front of the commission. But, and the renderings are gorgeous, I just don't see a rendering of the four-story height. I see what you call three-story. Yeah, is there a rendering for the four-story to show how high it is? Or just an elevation of it? Maybe it hadn't been drawn, I'm just asking the question.
No, we just, we did not draw that only because it's really not a view that most people will see. John, it's, it was really because it's internal to the site, it's not part of the entry progression and it's not something the neighbors would really perceive either.
Okay, well, okay, so it is going to be 55 feet from the top on a four-story building.
Yeah, from that ravine area, as we were describing earlier, to the to the peak, it would be 55 on that backside, yes.
Right. Okay, that's my comment.
Okay, all right, thank you. Who else have questions?
One more question to Diane.
And second, let me, I'll come back to you here in a minute, but we got the Commissioners, I think, have questions that I'd like to get them to, you know, ask theirs, then we'll, I will come back to you. So, all right, Commissioners, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple.
Yes, Mr. Kane?
Well, that's great, thank you. I want to circle back to the condition of Pollock Avenue. And I'm looking for first input from staff, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, what is the, is there, has there been any evaluation of the capacity of Pollock Avenue to handle additional traffic?
Mr. Urban?
Jim, Jim Solomon, I, we had a.
Jim Sullivan, we had a longstanding, I guess, maybe a condition of a building permit on a property there that they were going to pave, and Jim, I know, has examined that regarding what the right-of-way width was, so I'll let Jim Sullivan answer that.
Well, if you're talking about improvements to Pollock, there are some restrictions we'd encounter, one, the utilities on both sides, underground utilities on both sides of the roads, road and the grade. So at this time, there's not any plans to widen that.
Thank you, and so this next question is for the applicant, and again, and this is in connection with Pollock Avenue. Has there been an evaluation and consideration about how your traffic might use Pollock Avenue?
Baker?
Thank you, Commissioner King and Mr. Chair. I do not believe we have analyzed Pollock whatsoever for ingress egress traffic. We did not consider that as a means of access. Diane, did you look at Pollock whatsoever? Or Roger, have you had a conversation about looking at Pollock?
I would just say that Pollock appears to be about twelve feet wide, so that would mean its capacity is not sufficient for two-way traffic. I don't know who owns Pollock, whether they would like to restrict that to one-way traffic. Or, but from a capacity standpoint, it is not able to handle two-way traffic.
The development does not show access to Pollock from Friendship.
I think we've got to be realistic here and address that there's a connection there, and that we've got to figure out what we're going to do with this connection. There's no plan in that space. And I think we have an incomplete plan if we don't take up that consideration. Next question is about the speed limit markers on Highway one forty-six. Has anybody, is anybody able to answer where the thirty-five mile per hour speed limit markers exist on Highway one forty-six in proximity to your entrance, Friendship Drive?
Ms. Zimmerman, do you know?
I think you're muted.
Yes. According, I mean, my data came from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, which says that the official order is that the speed limit changes at the point-three-four mile marker on one forty-six. However, on Google Street View, the sign in front of the building adjacent to us, there is a telephone pole with the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit sign there. I won't speak for the Transportation Cabinet, but I would say that it is out, that is out of compliance and does not meet with their requirement that that sign should be placed there. One of the things the city of Peewee Valley requested was to change where the speed limit actually changes from forty-five to thirty-five. So it appears that the city of Peewee Valley needs to have a conversation with the Transportation Cabinet about what is the actual speed limit and how that complies with the regulation, the order that is signed by the Transportation Cabinet, which establishes the speed limit.
So regardless of whether it's in spec, right now, we have a sign that establishes a thirty-five mile per hour speed limit at one forty-six in Friendship Drive, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. King, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay, all right, Commissioners, before we continue with questioning, we're running up on our thirty-minute timeline here. Do you want to add fifteen minutes to the questioning? I don't want us to, you know, rush through this, I know there's a lot of good questions, and we want to get, you know, get these questions answered. So if I could get a motion, maybe to add fifteen minutes to our time, I think it would be appropriate.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Jeffries.
Okay, Mr. Falvey, moose, we add fifteen minutes to our time limit here on the questioning from the Commissioners.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Halfling, second set, okay. Anybody opposed to that adding the fifteen minutes? Okay, we will add fifteen minutes to our time. Who would like to be next, questions? Any additional questions? I know Ms. Hagan had another question, but.
Bonet does.
Oh, yes, Ms. Bonet, go ahead.
My question is either for Ann Hilton or Robin, and I didn't catch her last name, about the increase of traffic on Dogwood Lane being a concern. I don't know exactly where Dogwood Lane is, and I was trying to figure out which roads it connects to and why they think their traffic is going to increase. Like, is it a short cut to get to the facilities? Or I just need clarification on that because I'm not familiar with where it's located.
Okay, I don't, I think Ms. Hilton got off, I'm Robin Tansel. We are, I guess, east of Friendship Manor. We are, our street is right on one forty-six, and we are a dead-end street. We get tremendous amount of traffic, even when traffic's sitting on one forty-six, because I think they can cut through to Old Forest to get to Ash Avenue to get back around, like when there's a wreck on seventy-one. We're just like, and Mike is still on, he can attest to it too, because he lives back here. We're just, I mean, it's like one and a half lanes, if it's even that.
Your point is that a lot of people take your road mistakenly, thinking that it's not them somewhere else. Yes. I've seen many streets that will have a no outlet sign or a dead-end sign. Does your street not have any of that type of signage?
I think it does at the front of the street, but that still doesn't stop them. It still, they still come back here.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. For the developers, I do know, I read somewhere in the staff report that they acknowledge the fact that improvements really need to be made near Friendship Drive and Houston Lane. So this question may be for staff, but when it comes to doing the striking out with the paint of the intersection or flashing lights, does all of that have to go through the state and the state would fund it? Or does the developer have any sort of way of moving that along and financially supporting that?
That is, again, in control of the, by the Transportation Cabinet, so any recommendation would have to be approved by the Transportation Cabinet. And the indication that we have in the responses from the Transportation Cabinet doesn't indicate that any of those things have been considered at this point.
Is there any way the developer can say by offering to financially support those improvements with the state? Is there any way they can help it move along and possibly get approval? Because it's not like a turn lane, adding pavement and dealing with easements. It's paint and electric lights.
Well, let me just, and this is going to be somewhat like testimony. I've not seen where the Transportation Cabinet has approved, I'll call it midstream and offset signals. So rather than us trying to determine what the cabinet or make the applicant pay for something, I think that we would recommend that the applicant ask the Transportation Cabinet whether any of these could be approvable and worry about how it gets paid for later, if they can even be approved. And again, these are just recommendations to consider. I don't know whether they can actually be accomplished. There's an offset intersection with Houston Lane, so I know a full traffic signal won't be put there. A flashing yellow light, we've had issues even on seventeen ninety-three where we tried to get them for a school crossing, and they won't put them in. Striping on the road is something that was talked about, but the cabinet didn't say, oh, yeah, let's go do that. And there's not enough right-of-way to put in turn lanes. And the applicants can't, you know, you can't force somebody to sell you additional right-of-way for turn lanes. So all of those would have to be discussed with the Transportation Cabinet. And my recommendation would be that they, we ask the applicant to have a discussion with the Transportation Cabinet, because this is, again, a recommendation to the Peewee Valley City Council, and that won't happen until at least January, February, I think, is the public hearing. So they have ample time to flesh that out and then leave that decision to the Peewee Valley City Council.
Okay, I do have a quick more questions for the architect. And basically, and you can let me know if this just doesn't matter. But with the cottages, is that, are the cottages going to be rented to the elderly? Or are they going to be given the option to purchase them? And then how is landscape maintenance and exterior maintenance of those buildings handled? Is that in the responsibility of the tenant? Or is there, is that the developer's responsibility?
Hi, this is Susan Penya responding to your question. The pricing structure for the community, so independent living apartments and cottages, is what we call an entrance fee structure, so they would pay a monthly fee as well as a highly refundable entrance fee, around ninety percent refundable. In terms of the maintenance of the property, that would be the ability of the owner of the property, which is, you know, it's actually Peewee Valley Senior Services LLC would ultimately be the owner as a subsidiary organization.
Okay, so the organization's responsibility, not the tenant's responsibility?
Correct. I think that's all I have, thank you.
All right, I think Mr. Douglas, do you have some questions?
I do, I like to go back to justification for the, I guess, zoning map amendment change. I guess this will go to Ms. Penya, who did most of the, I believe, justification for that. And that was, is this more or less a mixture of senior living or handicap living, or, because I heard you mention age sixty-two? So, because we have a mixture of, you said, senior living, and you said that Alzheimer's was two-hundred-and-fifty-five percent increase throughout, I guess, the nation. But I only see twenty-one units for memory care. But I see more independent living in the apartment complex, which you stated was for age sixty-two. So I'm just asking why the mixed comparison, is it more or less for senior living? Or is it also for handicap people sixty-two? Are we looking more, I know, don't get me wrong, don't make it negative that I'm going to say this, but is it housing also? For section two oh, one, I believe?
No, this is, this is completely market rights, senior living community. And the reason we call it a life plan community or continuing care retirement community is that you provide, the concept is you provide all the levels of care on one campus. And the higher levels of care that we're offering are primarily designed to be for the benefit of the residents who moved into independent living. But we will certainly make it available to people coming in directly from the public if there are units available. And one thing I will say is the memory, we're calling it memory optimization. Most of the times when you think of memory support or memory care, you're thinking of a place where someone goes and they just make them comfortable while they continue to decline. Our goal is to create an environment where it's more of a rehab environment, and people could actually, first of all, the first goal is to slow the progression, the second is to stop it, and the third is to reverse aspects of that disease process. So that ideally, if someone were to come in and maybe not be functional at all, could get to a point of functionality where they might be able to back home or to a lower level of care.
Okay, my next question would be for, going back to, I like to just ask about the parking situation. I didn't hear anyone mention, but I did see it in the development summary. There appears to be underground parking. That's included in the renderings or included as parking here? I didn't hear anyone explain how that works, but I see that in your summary. Is anyone, I guess, who is aware that, want to talk about that in the applicant's side?
Sure, and Commissioner Douglas, you're right, we had to, towards the end, and I apologize, we were a little rushed. I did mention parking briefly, only in that it's very, it's disseminated throughout the site proportionally, and we're not, you know, looking to put any area with one big sea of parking. As it relates to the indoor or underground parking, Craig, would you mind stepping in and providing clarification on that?
Sure, sure, the only place we have underbuilding parking is actually in the phase-two apartments. So in those smaller buildings, in order to kind of conserve land use, maintain as much tree cover towards the property lines, we actually, and the fact that it is on somewhat of a slope, we basically have a condition where you can drive down and then, and then come into the end of the building, park under the building. And so that is the location where we would have underbuilding parking.
So does the two-hundred-four provided include the thirty-six in phase-two?
I'm not exactly sure, because I'm not sure where you're referencing the two oh four. John, can you answer that?
Well, because your parking spaces for the development says four-hundred-and-seventy-four parking spaces provided, and you're required four-hundred-and-thirty. So I'm just trying to figure out where the other parking spaces are, and is there enough parking spaces in phase-one, is what I'm trying to get. As required by our parking code?
Yes, the parking summary is a, the parking summary is a compilation of both phase-one and phase-two. But as Craig mentioned, because the underground parking is specifically designed for that future building, the remaining parking matches or exceeds the required number of units residents and staff.
And I guess, Mr. Urban, in phase-one, compared to the number of units and occupants, did we decipher how many parking spaces were required?
Let Amy answer that, because she has dealt, Amy, or do you have that in front of you? Because I know that you looked at the parking requirements.
I'm sorry, you'll have to repeat it, I had someone come in and was asking me questions on the cul-de-sac on another project in the middle.
The question is that I was asking, on phase-one of the project, what was the required parking spaces in the PUD, or requirements in our ADAs? And what are they proposing in phase-one?
Well, they have in the parking summary, with the, at the bottom, the assisted living, thirty-seven. So they're required to have one space for every two units, so they're required to have, minimum is nineteen. The memory care facility, one space for every two units, so they're required to have eleven. So there, so are you asking, do these parking calculations include the future phases?
Well.
Why?
It appears to me, when I look at the summary, the parking spaces total is for both phases. I'm not sure there's adequate spacing for just phase-one, and I don't see that broken out just to show a phase-one parking requirement. It could take them two years to get the other phase, or three years, I don't know. But I'm just trying to find out, is there enough park?
Well, they're showing that the required is three-hundred-and-ninety-five, and they're proposing four-hundred-and-seventy-four. That includes fourteen-eighty-eight, so when they come in with individual site plans, when they come in for the independent living, that individual site plan will have to have the minimum and the max parking shown on that individual site plan.
Okay, well, he just testified that under the independent living apartments, which are going to be, I guess, two apartment buildings, that if they have a total of two-hundred-and-thirteen required spaces they need, they're going to have two-hundred-and-four, but thirty-six of them are underground, but it won't be built until the second phase.
Well, this says there's only two-hundred-and-four. So in the independent living, they're required to have. a hundred and ninety-six. They're providing two hundred and four. So, let's see.
On their summary, they show independent living required number sixty, and then two bedrooms, a hundred and fifty-three, which is a total of two thirteen, I believe.
Where are you getting your numbers?
On the new addendum that you sent to us.
So on the develop, I'm looking at the master plan report. So I want to make sure we're looking at the same thing.
I'm looking at the P U D developmental summary that you sent us.
Okay, wait a second, I'll have to pull that back up.
If I may clarify that, Commissioner Douglas, there would only be twenty-four spaces required for the future apartments. And there would only be for the future cottages, that's only two, two per unit. And that is accounted for with the garages that are part of the.
So are you telling me, you're telling us in phase one, there's adequate parking per the units being built?
Yes, sir. While, while we do not split out the phasing with our parking summary, I, I would tell you that we, we have taken that into account. There is adequate parking, if not more, for phase one.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, we, we have expired our fifteen minutes additional time. I know Ms. Hagan had, had one more question. And I'll go back to her and, and, and then we'll try to wrap up the, the question here from the commissioners. Ms. Hagan?
My question is just on, I read somewhere in the documents, I'm a little confused. Are you a nonprofit, for the applicant, are you a nonprofit or profit organization?
Mr. Baker?
Scott, do you want to talk about that?
We are, we are a nonprofit organization.
And so how would you contribute to the taxes in the city of Pee Wee Valley?
And, you know, that, go ahead, John.
That's certainly a conversation that, you know, we will have with, with, with the mayor. I'm not sure if that's been broached just yet, but that's certainly something that we would discuss with Pee Wee Valley.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chair, can I just say, Mr. Urban, one question?
Or? Okay, sure, go ahead.
I know I'm stretching it. Mr. Urban, is it possible for a binding element to be put in place incorporating Mayor Rogers' suggestions on traffic elements with the state and also with the applicant? That they do meet at some point to discuss the safety issues? I would think the applicant would want that anyways.
What I would suggest, again, since the state has not been asked about any of these, and they're, again, like, moving the speed limit sign is something that's actually initiated by the city, not the applicant, that based on the discussion we're having about those comments, that the applicant, that we don't put it as a binding element, that the city can add a binding element during their discussion in public hearing, if that hasn't been satisfied. Between now and the time of the hearing at the city council, I would advise the applicant to try to reach out to the transportation cabinet with these recommendations and see if there is a possibility. And then let the city actually place a binding element if, if in fact, any of those can be accomplished.
Okay.
All right, if we put a binding element on them and then the cabinet says, no, no, you can't do any of these, what do we do? We have to come back and remove the binding element. I don't mean to kick the cabinet down the road, but I think it becomes one of those that the applicant will have to investigate. And then at a city council level, you can always add binding elements to the decision.
I'm just surprised the state's not aware of this application for, and.
Well, they are, and you've got, you've got their response, which was they don't believe that turning lanes can be put in. And that if anything was to change on Friendship Manor, they would require it, an encroachment permit, and they would review it. Again, I don't mean to offer testimony, but it's highly unusual to put mid, midstream traffic signals or flashing lights. But maybe something can come out of that discussion with the cabinet that would help increase the safety. And as an example, the city could initiate a speed study to have the cabinet consider moving the speed limit sign so that in this area, it is thirty-five miles an hour. But if the cabinet does a speed study and denies it, or says it's the appropriate, there, you can't, I don't think it's, you can bind the applicant to that because it's not in their control.
All right, Mr. Faly, can I answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, and let's, if we can, we'll, we'll move into rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant first. And I would like to ask Mr. Baker, if you, if you and your team could address the outstanding questions that we had from the folks that testified in opposition or whatever. I know Magistrate Logstern had a question about the alignment of the possibility of, you know, changing the alignment there and, and on one of the, the main roads. And so if y'all could address that, and then, then you can move into your rebuttal evidence and, you know, and cross-examination. So, Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carmen has provided an answer to Magistrate Logstern's question. They did specifically look at that issue to line up with the why. And according to Mr. Carmen, that it presented worse sightline distance issues than, than what is out there today. So they thought that would be a more detrimental move. Mr. Carmen, do you want to supplement anything you said on that?
I, I think that is correct. We, we certainly would be willing to continue looking at it. But I, I believe that the alignment that we are showing is, in fact, the best location based on the safety conditions along Old Floydsburg and Remers.
Okay.
Do we get a rebuttal or do we have?
You will in a minute, Mr. or Magistrate Logstern, yes, sir. Yeah. But go ahead, Mr. Baker.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, certainly if there's anything I forgot, please indulge me and, and, and let me, and remind me that I've missed a question. I know that there is a question about cut through traffic. We discussed within the last half hour or so about a controlled access point at Friendship and Floydsburg. So that would definitely cut the cut through traffic. And we will put signage up that says there's no through traffic. As it relates to, there was an idea for a one-way traffic, you know, entrance from the Grange, but exit Old Floydsburg. I propose that's something that, there's been this conversation about a, a discussion to be had with Pee Wee Valley, Oldham County and KYTC. And that's something we are definitely interested in and amenable to. And specifically because of kind of the dilemma that Mr. Urban described, we've got some recommendations that are coming from Pee Wee Valley and, and, but whether or not those can be accomplished is completely up to KYTC. And we would like just to sit at the table and, and talk with all the parties involved to work out solutions there. And we would suggest that we put this as one of the talking points. And that's something that Diane could look at too, as it might affect her traffic impact study, if it would be to provide one-way type access. Currently, the, the proposition was to have majority of residents and, and employees use Old Floydsburg, service use Lagrange. But that is something that we are willing to put on the table and have discussions with, with the experts. There was comments related to out of scale. And that is something we just disagree with. We believe that according to the, the future land use map, that Oldham County Planning has designated this, this property to be continually used as institutionally used. And with our plan, we are proposing a, a ground coverage of floor area ratio that is moderate to minimal in point two-two. I will remind the commission that under the current zoning, it could yield up to over point four F A R. And that's just not something we're looking to do. And a point two-two, including having the bigger sized buildings towards the center of the site, which are many of hundreds of feet away from the property line, does accomplish that in combination with the generous tree canopy that we will preserve around the perimeter. As it relates, there was a, a question about dumpster service. And, and that's a very good question. That's something that, you know, we would have our dumpsters serviced for the bigger buildings during a daytime hour. And we can put that into the contract with the service provider. You know, we, we've got some residents on the property as well, and we're cognizant of our neighbors. And we certainly do not want to create a situation that causes noise in the morning or nights and disturb people's privacy. As it related to the height, there was a conversation there where Mr. Kimball came in to explain the height and the different ways that it's measured and the perspective. If you were looking at the ravine at the building and how that would be different if you were looking at the building from the grade that does not include the ravine. So that was addressed. With Pollock Avenue, you know, again, that's something we would be very open to discuss with Pee Wee Valley and engineer Mr. Siliman with Oldham County. We simply just did not look at that as an access point option. But we do understand the commissioner's concern that access does exist today. But given the testimony by Diane, we certainly do not want to send traffic that way in light of, it's, it's, you know, very restricted dimensions, especially on the pavement. So we would like to, you know, put that on the list of discussions so we can have clear guidance from Pee Wee Valley and Oldham County as what they would like to see there. Again, Dogwood Lane, we will have zero connections to Dogwood Lane and no intention to ever connect to Dogwood Lane. And if there's any other questions related to the traffic study and that are left over, I, I would just suggest that Diane respond with the technicalities of, of any of the leftover questions. I know the methodology and the data collection for that study were both reviewed and approved by KYTC. Pee Wee Valley's engineer has weighed in and says he has no proposed changes to the T I S. And that is the same position that engineer Jim Siliman holds, that he has no proposed changes. And then the last thing recommendation is to have those conversations, which we are agreeable to have. If there's any other questions that I've forgotten, please let me, please remind me and we will get the answers to those questions.
All right, Ms. Zimmerman, do you have anything that you would like to add relates to traffic, traffic study?
I, I will concede this is the most unusual traffic study I've performed in twenty-five years. I'm thrilled that, that Jim Urban and Kipta were able to provide the streetlight data that we were able to at least utilize and get a sense of what the traffic is. The, because Mr. Allison had a few specific questions. The, the data was pulled as a, and to be representative of an average day in the month of February twenty twenty, representing the days Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, which the commission will recall, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays are the days that we are required to count traffic in meeting the Oldham County regulations for traffic impact study. So, so that data set was intentionally chosen. And then we verified the accuracy of the streetlight data with the transportation cabinet's count that was made at Station B O one. So, it, it, so that, that's sort of how we arrived at the data. I went back to try to identify if there was an error that he pointed out, and I could not, it didn't, it didn't appear to me that there's an error in translating the streetlight data into turning movement data. And, and yes, the St. Aloysius School causes some, some increased delay. But if you look at the appendix of the report, I intentionally listed the hours that school went in and out. And the, the P M peak hour carries the most amount of traffic on an hourly basis as compared to both the two to three, three to four, and seven to eight in the morning. So I feel like we captured the times of day that there is the most traffic on Kentucky one forty-six for the analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, anything else you would like to add in your rebuttal?
No, the only thing I would like to add is that as it relates to the, the perimeter buffer area, but I don't believe anything was brought up other than that. It was, I believe it was, Ms. Willinett was just in opposition to the landscape buffer area waiver. And I would just reiterate that where it's at its least, the fifteen foot up in the northwest corner, it will be supplemented with a fence. And that fifteen foot landscape buffer area is the normal standard in conventional zoning between multifamily and single family. And in that area specifically, or where you, or is where you will have cottages that are one story only up against, you know, that landscape buffer area. And with all the other existing tree lines that are in place, we believe that is adequately mitigated. And that's all I have right now for rebuttal. Anything else I'll say for a final statement?
Okay, yes, sir. All right, with that, we will now move into the rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the opposition. And you have, you all have ten minutes. And I'll start with Magistrate Logstern, I think, and then we all.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Kevin. I am, I've lived in Pee Wee Valley. Because I have to see it to believe it. Can we, it looks like I'm froze up. Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you.
I'll keep talking, just like I, I'm, it's, it's working, but it looks like everybody's froze. There we go. Okay, so I guess my question, I'm still, like Mr. Allison and Mr. Faly, the, the coming on Friendship Manor in Houston Lane is a very dangerous, it's extremely dangerous. I've sat there when somebody's sitting in Friendship Manor and I'm sitting in Houston Lane trying to decide, okay, who's going to go? And we waste ten, fifteen seconds trying to decide who's going to go, who's not going to go. That to me is a very dangerous intersection. And again, because it's not aligned. The second question, I'm still not convinced, and, and maybe it's because of the, 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 the fifteen foot setback or whatever the setback requirements you're, you're trying to get on the backside of, of Old Floydsburg Road and Remers. And maybe that's why the study hadn't been done, because that's where you wanted to put one of your buildings. I don't know. I would love to see before it goes in front of Pee Wee Valley, a sight distance study showing me that aligning where I call the Y, where Old Floydsburg Road, Remers Road cuts through and where this friendship, let's call it Friendship Manor Drive, cannot be put there. I know there are houses right up the street that have driveways off of, I guess it turns into Remers Road there. So I don't know about the sight distance there. But I would just love to see a study showing me that there is a sight distance problem, and it has to stay where it is, instead of just saying, well, we've looked at it, but we didn't do it. I, I, that to me is, I would love to see that because I don't like roads that are fifty foot apart or a hundred foot apart coming out on one another. It just makes more sense for roads to be parallel to one another. So it helps the traffic flow a lot better. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, anyone else on that would like to have rebuttal at this time, a cross-examination? Anyone else?
I have one question. This is Jim Allison.
Yes, sir, Mr. Allison.
I know Diane Zimmerman made the comment that they use the historical data. But again, I've lived here forty some odd years as well. And using the historical data is only good if the historical data fits today's situation. And I think the traffic patterns have changed to the point that the algorithms, which were originally generated and used by KYTC, And I think the traffic patterns have changed to the point that the algorithms which were originally generated and used by KYTC. May no longer be accurate. I know they, they are. Very used to using them and feel the accuracy is right. But I think that there needs to at least be some check done to see what the current situation is. And I know with COVID, there's a lot of people not going to work, schools aren't in and things like that. But somehow that needs to be incorporated into some of the future reviews to see to make sure Diane's work is still valid. Or has it actually been changed? And the fact that we do have the offset there at the railroad, the cross traffic up at. Railroad Avenue in Crestwood is a slight offset, not near as bad as Houston Lane. But the state put in lights there that allow the opposing roads to go independent versus 146 flowing. So I think in the discussions that we have with the Brighton Heights people and the state. That's something they should at least look into to try to address that. For the future reference by the time it goes to Oldham County, excuse me, to Peewee Valley.
Mr. Jeffries or a review was mentioned in that question? May I address that?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just want, I guess, if there's maybe some confusion in the word historical data. Historical data may refer to anything that's just not current. In our review of this, when, when I say that we refer to some historical data, some of that was as recent as 2019 or 2017. Traffic counts that were taken on, taken from KYTC's interactive traffic map that's available online. Again, that was to compare the streetlight data that was provided from. Kipta to Ms. Zimmerman and that she interpreted, again, just to get a level of comfort that. That was at least within the realm, realm of accuracy. So again, historical data doesn't necessarily mean that it's 20 or 15 years old. This was much more recent to use as a comparison in review.
And let me just add, streetlight data, what is it? Streetlight is a software that utilizes cellphone information on travel. And Kipta has a license to use that streetlight data. It's only available to municipalities and forms of government, not to individuals, and that's why we were able to, to acquire it by requesting it. And we requested very specific information. Jim Solomon, you might correct me. I think it is within the last three or four months. So we took this data that we got through that software. And, and looked at it and Diane used it in her analysis. And compared it with those traffic studies that were done in 19 and 17. And I believe we also added an incremental growth rate to that old data. So when you compared all of these, they actually were quite accurate to. What would be normal traffic, not COVID traffic. And Jim Solomon, did I say that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so that's when we say streetlight, that's what streetlight is.
Mr. Allison, do you have anything else for rebuttal, sir?
As far as the, the traffic, I think we've covered that probably enough. I think there's a couple of things that want to be considered when this goes to Peewee Valley's review board and one. Is who's going to be responsible for the upkeep of Friendship Drive? That is a private drive currently. It is not up to city standards. And if that, if the development wants the city to take that over, do snow plow removal, maintain it and so forth. There probably needs to be some binding element considered by the city of Peewee Valley. That that be funded by the organization if we take it over. Also, since this organization is nonprofit and will not be paying taxes. The city needs to see how they would fund the police and fire department. Impact of this going into our community right now. We would be receiving no income to do that, and yet we would be taking all that additional burden. So that should be something to be considered at that point, too.
All right, Mr. Allison, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? We've got about a minute and a half left here on the rebuttal for the opposition. Does anybody else have any comments or rebuttal? Okay, seeing no one or hearing no one, we will now move into the final statement of the opposition. And does anyone like to, would like to have a final statement? This is for the opposition. Magistrate Logston or Mr. Allison, either one, would you all like to add anything for a final statement?
I'll just make one final statement. I think the, the biggest issue that we appear to be considering. Is the one of the intersection of 146 and Houston Lane and the potential safety hazards that. Brings into bear and anything we can do to try to mitigate that. As we move forward with this development, I think is in the best interest of everyone combined. And that, I think that should be the address. The thing Mr. Logston brought up about the other intersection with Floyd'sburg Road, I think would help enhance. The ingress and agress of traffic into that development over there. One final item relative to through traffic. I think Wendy Higgin brought this up about some restrictions so that you restrict. The traffic in and out through the flow through Brighton Heights there. I think that going back and taking a look at some options there as to maybe, as mentioned. To bring the traffic for the cottages out one way and the other facility out the other. Art to have a gate which you have to have a resident access to get through to minimize flow through traffic there. Might be something to consider as the development moves forward. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Allison, thank you. Magistrate Logstons, do you have anything that you'd like to add for a final statement? He might have had to sign off here, I'm not sure. Anyone else that's spoken in opposition, would you have, like to have anything to add for a final statement? Okay, hearing none, seeing no hands go up, we'll now move into the final statement of the applicant. And Mr. Baker, you have five minutes of final statement.
Thank you very much Chairman Jeffries and members of the commission and Mayor Rogers and, and folks that have tuned in today. Thank you for your time. Especially in the morning and it's taken up the majority of the morning and into the afternoon now, so I really appreciate your time and consideration today. We've heard a lot of things, a lot of evidence was being put into the record. And where we come down on this is that. We have presented what we believe a very optimal development to utilize the PUD development. Also in a, in a trajectory that we are about to face where the senior. Population will be on the increase and notably in Oldham County. And as Susan Peña presented, we are also looking at a decrease in caregivers. You know, the trek has been historically a part of this property for almost 100 years now and. It really wants to make its contribution in a way that it furthers its mission and that is to provide continuing care. To provide a vibrant lifestyle for its residents and those people that would like to age in place. Here at Brighton Heights. We have set forth in our master plan report. Various discussions and addressing numerous applicable objectives from Oldham County's comprehensive plans update. And because of what we explained before in that, the future land use map suggests institutional. We are an institutional use, but we also have a number of different residences in different, in different buildings, in different densities. And at different setbacks, at different heights, which is very difficult to accomplish with conventional zoning. Hence the ask for the PUD zoning. The commission knows its charge as it relates to KRS chapter 102, 13, in that it must find that. The proposal is in agreement with Oldham County's comprehensive plan. We have submitted. A long litany of justification statements. I have also provided and would like to enter into the record. Proposed summary of findings, a fact that Amy Alvy does have in her possession and. Another part of your charge today is as it relates specifically to the zoning code, there is a section within the PUD zoning. Process whereby it requires the planning commission to make findings affect on. The master plan. And just as a final statement, I would suggest that we also meet those standards for reasons set forth today. As well as set forth in the justification statement. The master plan is consistent with the intent, purpose and the requirements of the PUD regulation for reasons we've explained. It is a single entity that will operate on 47 contiguous acres. And it'll integrate an existing healthcare facility with future more modernized healthcare facilities to allow seniors to age in place. And the proposed development advances the general welfare, the community in the neighborhood. Because we explained in that this will be a, a very refuge-like serene. Setting for seniors that is a dire need moving forward in the next couple decades that we will have to address. Providing care for the senior population and as it relates to the benefits, combination of land uses, innovation of physical design. And the interrelationship with the land uses in the surrounding area. We just discussed how the PUD is the optimal zoning district for this type of proposed use. And in that, you have uses that provide synergies with inside the campus for its residents that will reduce traffic. It will reduce the, the need to leave the campus. But also as it relates to the outside of the campus, we have really well insulated. The proposed campus with tree canopy landscaping and fencing. And finally, for the proposed development and zoning map amendment must be in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. That criterion is well addressed in the justification statement for the zoning itself. And with that, Mr. Chair, all of that submitted, we humbly request a, a recommendation to the PUC City Council. For a, for a recommendation to rezone to PUD and approval of the master plan development report.
All right, Mr. Baker, thank you, and that completes your final statement, sir?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, before we move into discussion and, and possible motions. I'm gonna call on Mr. Urban as, as normal to. You know, kind of outline us here what we're going to be voting on and then considering. I know the zoning map amendment will be first and that will be a recommendation, excuse me, turn my alarm off here. Recommendation to the city council of Peewee Valley on the zoning map amendment. And then once we vote on that, you know, if we have a positive vote there. Then we all move into the other motions that, that will need to be considered at that time. Before, and I'd like, go ahead and we'll close this hearing on the, what we have discussed. So far, and then I'm going to call on Mr. Urban here in just a minute, but this is on docket PZ 20016. Zoning map amendment proposal and then the docket PZ 20017. So Mr. Urban, if you would, let's outline, if you would, for us outline exactly what's being requested here as far as the zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to focus the commission's attend, attention on just the zoning map amendment. I think that's the first and foremost and most important decision you're going to make, and that's a recommendation to the city of Peewee Valley. And as you saw in the presentation both by Amy Alvy and by the applicants. A portion of that property is not yet in the city. But we're going to make the assumption that because they, the applicant has requested annexation through the city. That, that there might be acceptance. If it's not, then it'll go recommendation to Oldham County Fiscal Court. But I think for the purposes of your decision today. On the zoning map amendment, it will be a recommendation of the entire property to the city of Peewee Valley. Again, zoning map amendment on page four of your staff report, you have sample motions for both approval and denial. You can rely on the testimony and evidence that you heard today. In either case, whether you're going to recommend approval or denial. The applicant has submitted a summary and finding of facts that is in, talks about compliance with the. Comprehensive plan, those were also in their master plan. Again, you can use those to either approve or deny, but you have to base your decision. On those sample motions that are in the comprehensive plan and fill, I mean, in the staff report rather, and fill in the blanks. So let's just focus on that decision. Is this an appropriate zoning map amendment? And at this point, zoning map amendment does not carry any binding elements. So it's really, what is your recommendation to the city of Peewee Valley?
Okay, Mr. Urban, thank you. Now commissioners, at this point. The chair would entertain a motion on the proposed zoning map amendment and this. Will go, if it's a positive vote, will go to the city council of Peewee Valley for their consideration. And other than if, you know, as Jim outlined, if they do not annex the property that's in Oldham County, then. That portion would go to the fiscal court of Oldham County to be, as a recommendation from this body, from the planning commission. So commissioners, I would open it up for a motion. I'd like to get a motion and a second on the proposed zoning map amendment. And that would, would be that first and then we'll open it up for discussion. So commissioners, do you have a motion here? And if you, you'll have to either speak up or, because sometimes I can't see your, I've got five videos here on the screen, so I can't, you know, see everybody that's. Of the, of all the commissioners, so just speak up and then we'll, I'll recognize you and, and we'll get a motion and then we'll move forward with a second.
Mr. Jeffries, I'll take a run at it.
Okay, all right, yes, sir.
I, I make a motion to approve, recommend approval to the city of Peewee Valley. The zoning makeup, zoning map amendment change because it complies with objective LU two dash three, number four. Of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, Mr. Carter is county attorney. Is that an adequate motion or do we need to add anything to that?
I think it's adequate.
Okay, all right, he's, county attorney says that it is adequate, so at this point I would entertain a second to that motion. To approve. And Miss Bonnet, seconds? All right, now we'll open it up for discussion and this is on the zoning map amendment. Request that will be a recommendation that would go to the Peewee Valley City Council and so any discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Douglas?
I know Mr. Carter said everything's okay with it and Mr. Urban has outlined that if it was not annexed by the city of Peewee Valley. And it would go to the appropriate legislative body which the Oldham County Fiscal Court. Should we document that in that motion? It would go to the appropriate legislative body if it's not annexed, I mean, because right now the motion just says goes to the city of Peewee Valley.
Okay, Mr. Carter?
I didn't understand the question.
The motion says, the motion was stated that it would only go to the recommendation approval to the city of Peewee Valley. According to Mr. Urban, not all this has been annexed by the city of Peewee Valley. Should we state in the motion? That it should also include the appropriate legislative body of Oldham County Fiscal Court if not annexed.
Yes, I think it probably should.
Mr. Elder, are you okay with modifying your motion to say that it would, if it is not, and if the property is not annexed into the. Into Peewee Valley that it would both, both go to the fiscal court, Oldham County Fiscal Court. Is a recommendation and also to the city of Peewee Valley?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Miss Bonnet, is you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
For the minutes, we're just going to say they're recommending approval to the appropriate legislative body.
Mr. Elder, is that okay?
Yes, oh, yes.
All right, any further discussion on the proposed zoning map amendment? Any further discussion? Okay, seeing no hand go up or hear no one, we will now proceed to vote and this will be a. Hand count or whatever from Ms. Haichu, she will call the roll and then I ask you to state your name. And also, you know, whether you vote in favor of this zoning map amendment. Motion that will go to the appropriate legislative. motion that will go to the appropriate legislative bodies. So, Ms. Haichu, if you would, this is a vote in a zoning map amendment to go to the appropriate legislative body. So if you would, take the vote.
Mr. King?
Great King, yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Bonet, yes.
Ms. Davis? Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Do a thumbs up or thumbs down? There you go, yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Falby?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
This is Mr. Finney, yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Mr. Halfling, yes.
Mr. Hampton?
No.
And Ms. Nasser?
Katie Nasser, yes.
Okay, besides you, what is the vote count?
It is twelve to one.
Okay, twelve to one and the motion to approve the zoning map amendment recommendation to the appropriate legislative bodies passes on a vote of twelve to one. I don't have my gavel here, so I'll make a all right, the zoning map amendment recommendation has been approved. So with that, I'll call on Mr. Urban again to outline the PUD development master plan request.
Sure. Well, there now you're going to have three decisions to make. The first is on the master plan report. And again, there's a motion to either approve or deny the the PUD master plan report. And I'm, I'm not really sure that there are binding elements other than it would be there should be no significant changes to development master plan as presented at the November twenty fourth, twenty twenty public hearing without the review by the Olden County Planning Commission. And then there are some here listed like a detailed landscape plan and lighting plan shall be submitted. I think that's actually in the development plan. Updated traffic study. Amy, help me out here. I think the rest of those are actually in the development plan, not in the master plan report.
Well, the the next item is the yes, the the development plan report. So I would, I agree with you that it would be the only condition would be as presented at the November twenty fourth planning.
Okay, so the the first decision now is related to the PUD master plan report. Then you have waivers requesting the landscape buffer areas. And then finally, the PUD master plan, development plan. And that in that development plan is where we're going to put a lot more binding elements. So the first one again is a motion to either approve or deny the master plan report with the one binding element that it only relates to, that there'll be no significant changes without review.
All righty, Mr. Urban, thank you. And as chair, I will then call on the commission for a motion and a second. If we get that, then we all move forward with discussion. But this will be on the PUD development master plan report on Brighton Heights.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. King?
Thanks, sir. This is with respect to the PUD development master plan report. I will move for approval of the master plan development report. Based on testimony and evidence presented to find it complies with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, including those referenced applicant submittal. Additionally, that it is in compliance with the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. I would like to incorporate the the binding element that no significant changes be applied without coming back before the commission.
All right, thank you. Let's see, Mr. Carter, is that is that an adequate motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do I have a second? Ed Halfling seconds, all right. Any discussion now on the proposed motion to approve on the PUD development master plan report? Any discussion? Okay, we will, I don't see any hands or any hear anybody. So we will proceed to vote on the PUD development master plan report on Brighton Heights. And I'll call on Ms. Haichu again to do a voice, I mean, a count here. Ms. Haichu? This is a motion to approve.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
No.
Mr. Halfling?
He has.
Mr. Finney?
This is Mr. Finney, yes.
Mr. Falby?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
They're having trouble with audio, so.
He's doing the thumbs up.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Bonet?
Bonet, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Smith, yes.
Ms. Hagan?
Hagan, yes.
Mr. Elder?
Elder, yes.
Mr. King?
Great King, yes.
Haichu, what's the count?
It is also twelve to one.
I think there's just point of correction, there's only twelve commissioners on plus the chairman, so it should be eleven to one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I think, yeah, I've been getting that same count on both of these. It's eleven and one.
Okay, well, let me, let me correct that for the record. So the first zoning map amendment motion was a vote of eleven to one. And then the PUD development master plan report Brighton Heights was also eleven to one in favor of.
And and just for the record, Mr. Klingefuss hasn't been on this hearing. And who's the other commissioner that's not?
Well, we have twelve and then Kevin would be thirteen.
And Klingefuss fourteen, so where's the fifteen?
Mary Ann, they haven't had her replacement appointment.
That's right, yep. For the record, yep.
Okay, all right, might not make sure we get that correct. All right, with that, now we'll move into the waiver request on the landscape buffer area. So, Mr. Urban, would you outline that please for us?
Amy, is it possible, can you quickly put up that exhibit that shows where the waivers are?
Sure.
And in doing that, I want to confirm that I heard the applicant say that they are, there's a portion where they meet the required landscape buffer area. And I want to just make sure that you understand what you're going to be considering voting on. So this would be waiver from section two, three, zero, zero, two, zero for general standards for a landscape buffer area. Again, on page five in your staff report, you have sample motions to either approve or deny that waiver. And Amy's getting the waiver request up here. There, there was a exhibit, maybe it was an applicant's exhibit that showed them in blue. Do we not have that one, Amy?
Oh, no, that was John Baker's.
Okay, so go back to the one that you just had.
Oh, okay.
You have two areas where there's a landscape buffer. Their waiver request.
Found the best way. One is here.
Yep, along that boundary. And then the other is where the cottages are.
Down here.
Yep. And so again, that that is a motion to either approve or deny the landscape waivers. You've heard evidence and testimony on how they were going to treat that area. And so again, on page five in your staff report, there's sample motions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Urban, Ms. Alvey. With that, the chair will now entertain a motion on the proposed landscape buffer area waiver of section two, three, zero dash zero, two, zero, general standards and requirements, number four, fifty feet perimeter landscape buffer area. So I would accept a motion at this point on this and as always, we'll give a second and hopefully and move forward when with discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. King?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to move for approval of the landscape buffer area as requested. Based on evidence and testimony presented to find that the applicant's approach to retaining existing landscape buffer areas and the the landscaping effort that they will make to provide screening in that space will be adequate and notably, I don't recall having anything arise in the testimony that looked like opposition to that request.
All right, Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion, sir?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it, Jeff Falby.
Mr. Falby, seconds? All right, any discussion on the proposed landscape buffer area waiver of section two, thirty, zero, two, zero? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll move into a vote. And this is a motion to approve the landscape buffer area waiver request of section two, thirty, zero, two, zero.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was there any potential, was there any potential conditions of approval of this waiver? Like, can they come in and make changes to the developmental plan to staff? Realignment of roads or realignment of those buildings or cottages?
This is only for the landscape buffer. This is not the developmental plan.
Right, yeah.
I'm just saying, if they come in and make changes to anything that could cause the road to be pushed over more than fifteen feet in that curve and becomes less than fifteen feet. So is it on conditions only of the developmental plan provided to us?
Well, and it is only the waiver, and I forgot to mention this, the waiver should only apply to the development plan considered at the November twenty fourth, twenty twenty Olden County Planning Commission public hearing. So to answer your question, if there are changes and if it affects this waiver, then they would have to revisit us.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you, whoever, the motion in a second, if you'll accept that binding element.
I'll accept that incorporated into the motion.
Yep. Okay, what about Mr. Halfling? It was at the second?
Mr. Falby.
Sorry, I'm sorry. All right, video. All right, is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the requested landscape buffer area? Okay, seeing none or hearing none, we all proceed to vote. I'll call on Ms. Haichu again to take the count, please. And this is a motion to approve.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Halfling, yes.
Mr. Finney?
Finney, yes.
Mr. Falby?
Falby, yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Douglas, yes.
Ms. Davis?
He's doing the thumbs up.
Ms. Bonet?
Bonet, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Smith, yes.
Ms. Hagan?
Hagan, yes.
Mr. Elder?
Elder, yes.
Mr. King?
Great King, yes.
Besides you?
That one is twelve to zero.
That should be, oh, okay, yep, you're right. All right, twelve to zero. So the motion on the landscape buffer area request on the waiver of section two, thirty, zero, two, zero passes on a vote of twelve to zero. The last thing we have to consider on this docket is the PUD master plan development plan. And I'll call on Mr. Urban again to outline that, please.
Okay, so this one again is a motion to either approve or deny the development plan, which is not again, that big master plan document. It's the development plan. And I'm gonna make sure that Mr. Baker and his team are listening to these proposed binding elements. And we're going to ask them whether they are in agreement with these. Because along with the ones that are in the staff report on page six, I have a list of potential ones. So I'd like to discuss those first with the commission. Pretty standard are the ones that are in the staff report. There should be no significant changes to development master plan as presented at the November twenty fourth, twenty twenty public hearing without review by the Olden County Planning Commission. And I'm going to say and the city of Peewee Valley. Number two is a detailed landscape plan and lighting plan shall be submitted with each site plan review. Number three is future phases as outlined in section H of the Brighton Heights master plan report will require review by the technical review committee and approval by the Olden County Planning Commission. And that's if there's no changes. So I'm not going to send that to the city of Peewee Valley. An update, number four is an update, updated traffic study shall be required at the time of review and approval of future phases as outlined in section H of the Brighton Heights master plan report. Number five is stormwater management plan shall be in accordance with the current county standards and regulations at the time of construction plan approval. We anticipated to go move through the the construction plans, but and we don't anticipate any changes in those stormwater requirements, but in the event that it does, or the city's requirements, they would have to comply. Number six is that each development plan, site plan must comply with all established federal, state, county and city of Peewee Valley ordinances and requirements at the time of the approval. So those are in your staff report. Now here's the ones that I heard during discussion, comments, questions, et cetera. And these are again, up for discussion by the commission. None of the living units can be converted into market rate rentals without review and approval by the planning commission and the city of Peewee Valley in a public hearing. Construction access is restricted to Old Floydsburg Road entrance. No construction activity on Saturday or Sunday. I, the applicant has suggested that they would put up no through traffic signs at Friendship Drive. Dumpster pickup shall be during daytime only. The connection to Pollock Avenue shall be reviewed before going to the city of Peewee Valley. And that we will conduct, the applicant should conduct a site distance analysis on Old Floydsburg Road and Reivers Road entrance before going to the city of Peewee Valley. And then that the suggestions made by the city council, and this is again, one, I didn't recommend that it be a binding element. But those, I'm sorry, Peewee Valley recommendations be addressed with the transportation cabinet before going to the to the city. You know, again, that one, if if the cabinet says you can't do these, then we can't hold them to a binding element. So with that, I I didn't, I don't think I heard any other potential binding elements. So again, if the commission has any questions on those or or comments.
Well, what I'd like to do, Jim, first is we all, let me ask Mr. Baker as the applicant here, if they're in agreement with those proposed binding elements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, with being limited to be able to contact with my client directly, I just asked that if anyone chime in on the development team that might have an issue or a need for further clarification. I know, Susan, I want to make sure that that first binding element that was read that relates to market rate housing that you guys are okay with. I know that there was a discussion about market rate prices, but that's within the context of senior care. I just want to make sure we're we're good on that.
So just so I understand clearly, when you say market rate rentals, you mean to non seniors? Is that really the point of that?
Right, and and traditional type apartment rental, that wouldn't be part of your continuum of care.
Correct. I I don't have any concerns with that. Scott, do you? Okay.
No concerns.
Okay. Mr. Baker, is that, so you're all are comfortable with those proposed binding elements that Mr. Urban outlined?
If I hear no objections, then I'm going to say, yes, sir.
Roger, was there, was there a, an allowance for some Saturday work hours or zero?
Zero.
Zero.
It's zero, that's that's a correct requirement.
Okay, very good.
Okay, all right, hearing that. Before we have any discussion with the commissioner, the commission, I would like to get a motion on the floor in a second, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Commissioners?
Or Bonet can make a motion?
Right, yes, ma'am.
A move that we approve the PUD master plan development plan because it complies with multiple objectives of the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision.
object, objectives of the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations as presented in testimony today, the justification statement, the finding effect, and summary presented to us, other additional reasons is their respect for open space, which I think is very important in Peewee Valley, their architectural design, their building clustering toward the center of the property while respecting the topography, and the purpose of their development serving the aging population and offering a variety of housing, I would like to include the proposed binding elements as reviewed by Jim Urban. Did I miss anything?
I think that's, sounds like an adequate motion, Mr. Carter, would you agree?
I agree.
All right, have a motion, a proposed motion on the PUD Master Plan Development on docket PZ two, zero, zero, one, seven, we have a second?
A second.
Hey, Mr. Finney, seconds, all right, now, any discussion on the PUD Master Plan, Plan Development Plan that was proposed by Ms. Bonet?
I do.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Hagan?
Can you just, Jim Urban, could you just clarify one more time, the KYTC, Peewee Valley applicant working together on the Houston Friendship Road opposing area?
And, and again, I did, I did not include that as a binding element, only because we're uncertain of the transportation cabinet's response, but that essentially, we're asking the applicant, aside from a binding element, to, uh, reach out to the transportation cabinet with the recommendations that are in the Peewee Valley, uh, letter that we received yesterday, to consider whether or not there are any remedies that could be accomplished before going to the city council meeting.
With the city council being able to deny, in the event that they don't agree with KYTC's recommendation?
Well, not necessarily deny, but they can place a binding element, because, as, as an example, Christmas is coming up and staffing, whatever, if for some reason they don't have an answer, then they could place a binding element that says they must get an answer, or if they do approve one, they can add that as a binding element that says you must then do this, since the cabinet said they could.
Okay.
So, it's, it's, it's either, it's either, uh, add a binding element or take it off the table, depending on what the response is.
Ms. Hagan, I, my understanding is that, you know, the city council has the authority to add to the binding elements, but they cannot remove binding elements, I think, is, is what we've been told.
Chairman Jeffries, is it appropriate to include in my motion what Jim Urban just said, although it's not a binding element that we are requesting?
Uh, let me ask County Attorney, Mr. Carter.
Well, if it's not a binding element, it doesn't have the force, force of the commission's recommendations, but it wouldn't be, I mean, you can do it, wouldn't hurt anything, but I doubt that it would have any influence legally.
I would guess that if the applicant doesn't go do that stuff, the city's not going to be responsive to our, our recommendation, so.
But, did it answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to approve the PUD Master Plan Development?
Yes, I have, Ed Halfling, I have a question for Jim Urban, the first additional binding element you added, could you explain that?
The, the, the first additional one outside the staff report?
Uh, yes.
Yes, it was, uh, none of the living units can be converted into market rate rentals without review and approval by the planning commission and city of Peewee Valley in a public hearing, so we don't anticipate necessarily that they are going to move away from their plan in terms of a kind of a continuum of care, but if, in the event that that should happen, they couldn't do it without coming back to the planning commission and the city council for review.
In other words, if they decide to open it up to the general public, they'd have to come back to you.
They, that's correct, they, they, and again, we, we heard a response from, from the applicants, representatives, that they don't intend to do that, we don't anticipate there's a problem, but that's an extra level of comfort that I heard from some people suggesting that we protect it only to the kind of plan that we heard today.
All right, thank you, Jim, that's good.
I, I have a question related to that, so where does it state in the development plan that they, I mean, how, how does anyone govern who they're leasing the apartments to, it seems to me, if you really take a look at the overall development, it has very little assisted living and memory care and a whole lot of, of rental, so how, how do you govern who they're renting the apartment and the cottages to?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, because only if we saw evidence that they were advertising outside of the kind of scope of their, of their proposal, would we be able to even understand whether they were renting to somebody inappropriately, so. Like with all code enforcement.
Element of some kind that can be placed on them that disallow, I mean, it seems to me like if they, if there's nothing that states to the contrary, then I don't know why they couldn't decide to rent it to whomever they wanted to.
Well, I think that's what this binding element is, is, it specifically addresses that. It says, none of, none of the living units, none of the living units, regardless of whether they're a cottage, an apartment, or whatever it might be, can be.
May I jump in here?
Uh, Mr. Carter?
I think, yeah, I think her question is, is it enforceable, and the answer is probably not.
That's exactly my question.
Okay. All right, Ms. Hagan, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, all right, any further discussion on this, uh, a motion to approve the PUD Master Plan?
Let's come back to that thought, all right, so is it possible just to include with the binding element a, an annual report of negative assurance, in other words, that we have reviewed our rental rolls, and we don't have any notations of, of violating that commitment, leave it at that?
Uh, Mr. Carter?
Motion detected at the back door.
Oh, sorry.
Security. Cats home.
Yeah, you could, if they would agree to a binding element that they would report annually, uh, the rentals of each unit and what their service they're providing in response to that rental, I don't know whether they would agree to something like that.
If, if it were high maintenance, I certainly would, would agree with that, and I'm trying to make it low maintenance by providing an opportunity to just submit a report of negative assurance, we have no violations of that commitment.
Yeah, the, the question would be for what length of time, I mean, are they going to do this for the, forever, or, you know, it's a period of ten years, or?
I had no intention of putting a time limit on it.
Okay, well, I don't know what you mean by negative assurance.
Negative assurance means that, uh, we, we have, uh, reviewed our, uh, rental, uh, records and find no violations of the commitment to rent only to those sixty-two, age sixty-two and older.
Well, that's like a non-proctored exam.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, trying to strike a balance.
That's not enforceable either.
So it seems to me, I think if I counted right, that after the development is complete, there will be two hundred and twelve units that are rentable in some way, shape, or form, whether it be a cottage or the, um, the apartments, so basically what we're doing is approving two hundred and twelve apartments to be built that they can then rent in any way, shape, or form they choose with no, no governance whatsoever.
Well, it, they, if they're being a binding element, it doesn't, it just holds them to honesty, and if we discover that there's a violation, then we can do something about it in terms of code enforcement.
They're also giving testimony under oath of what they plan to do with these, and who they plan to rent, we can look at every single case and assume that everybody is lying and trying to get away with something and prove nothing, so I feel like we have to respect the fact that they're being honest in their testimony under oath.
Mr. Chairman, this goes back to one of the questions I posed to Ms. Alvey about age or the qualifications of independent living and the age limit, she indicated that age sixty-two and, and, and progressing up with seniors, but I never got an answer, though, about anyone who's handicapped, I mean, we all know, you know, care for individuals who are handicapped, just like Friendship Matter has, they have people that are in their thirties and forties at Friendship Matter, so are we saying that they're just limited to sixty-two, or say, if somebody's handicapped and impaired to where they need assisted living, you're going to limit them to, to go into a, a facility like this, I, I, I don't know if you can impose that.
Well, I think the question at hand is market rate versus some kind of care, not age, in my opinion, the age is unenforceable.
I, it's, it's an, it's calling it an institutional use, but there isn't anything that causes it to only be institutional use, if that makes sense.
Well, you know, I think they testified that, you know, sixty-two was going to be the minimum age, and I think to get back to Mr. Douglas's question, whatever, I mean, if somebody was, was handicapped or, you know, limited in mobility, you know, my understanding from their testimony from the applicants and their team was that it be limited to sixty-two and older, so, you know.
So, can I make up, now that you brought this up, obviously, this is not something we had discussed in advance, so I, I confess, I haven't completely thought this through.
Mr. Chairman, you got to open the floor back up if you're going to take.
Yeah, I, I think we probably need to limit it to the discussion of the, of the commission here at this point.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, all right, any, any further discussion on this, I know there, you know, there's concern, but I, you know, I don't know what, as Mr. Carter has pointed out, you know, we're, we're somewhat limited on our, you know, what we can require at this point. Is there any further discussion on this motion to approve?
And let me just add, again, at the Peewee Valley City Council level, if the applicant provides some kind of testimony that will support something different than your binding elements, they can add to it.
Right.
So rather than getting a response right now from the applicant, they can look at this and suggest something that might, uh, address what we're discussing.
Right. All right, any further discussion before we move into taking a vote? Okay, seeing none or hearing none, we all now proceed to vote on the, the proposed PUD Master Plan Development Plan on docket PZ two, zero, zero, two, zero. So, Ms. Hyde you, if you would, let's do the vote on this, and this is a motion to approve.
Mr. King?
Greg King, yes.
Mr. Elder?
Elder, yes.
Ms. Hagan?
Hagan, no.
Mr. Smith?
Smith, yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Bonet, yes.
Ms. Davis? She's not on my screen.
He's doing thumbs up.
Mr. Douglas?
Douglas, yes.
Mr. Alvey?
Alvey, yes.
Mr. Finney?
Finney, yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Halfling, yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Nasser, yes.
And that is eleven to one.
All right, the proposed PUD Master Plan Development Plan, uh, motion to approve is , uh, is approved on a vote of eleven to one, so with that, I want to thank everybody, the applicant, and all the folks that testified today, and appreciate you all being on this Zoom call, it's kind of a challenging, you know, way to do a, a, a public hearing, but it seemed like everybody, you know, worked out pretty well today, and hopefully, you know, moves forward to the city council of Peewee Valley, like, you know, they'll consider what we've discussed today and make a decision based on, on the, so, this, Commissioners, we're not done yet, we have another, they might have just our comprehensive plan, uh, somebody needs to mute their microphone if they, if they have, a lot of feedback, for some reason, but anyway, we, one more.
Can I ask just one question real quick now that the voting's all over, how will this translate when they sell this property?
All the. That would probably be a question for Mr. Urban outside of this, of this hearing, uh, because, you know, that, just give him a call or give, uh, Ms. Alvey a call, and they can, you know, can discuss that with you, so, all right, with that, Commissioners, I'm going to take about a less than ten minute recess here before we go into our last doctored item, so, um, we'll, we'll take about, like I say, around a, a ten minute recess, and then we'll come back and, and discuss the comprehensive plan update, so.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thank you all.